Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Arlington Heights Village Board to order on June 2nd, 2025, and the first order of business is to, if you please, join me in rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So next on our agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have one item, and that is from the May 19th. Do we have--
Excuse me, Mayor, should we call the roll?
Yeah. Becky, I'm so glad you're here. The next order of business is calling the roll, so Becky, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Dunnington?
Here.
Trustee Santa Maria?
Here.
Trustee Shirley?
Here.
Trustee Manganaro?
Here.
Trustee Schwingback? Trustee Labads?
Here.
Trustee Zick?
Here.
Trustee Bertucci?
Here.
President Tenalia?
Here. Thank you. This is awesome. Okay, so really quickly then, let's go ahead on the village board meeting minutes from May 19th. Is there anyone who needs to have-- be recused from that meeting, from those minutes?
I do.
Trustee Dunnington, anyone else? Any corrections or deletions? Board or from the audience? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the minutes of May 19th.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Labads, seconded by Trustee Manganaro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any approved, any opposed? None, motion carries. Okay. Fabulous. All right. I think if we look around, we all know why we're here tonight, and it's not for anybody with two legs. Right now, this is one of the great nights in our community and other communities nearby where we get to recognize some pretty special officers that work with us here. Oh, I guess there is another item beforehand. I'm jumping ahead twice now. I'm so anxious to take care of these dogs, but we have to take care of the warrant register first. So can I have a-- can I call on Trustee Bertucci?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the warrant register for the check date, May 30th, 2025, in the amount of $3,225.82.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Trustee Bertucci and seconded by Trustee Labads. Is there any discussion or any questions from anyone? Audience or on the board? None? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Santa Maria?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Zick?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Manganaro?
Aye.
President Tenalia?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Now we're at where I thought we were gonna go before. So I think I'm gonna call on our police chief, Chief Nick Pacora.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I think it's a giveaway why we're here this evening. We're here to talk about the Arlington Heights Police Department's K-9 unit. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge everybody that's here in support of the K-9s. The material before the board tonight is three. Two ordinances to transfer ownership of village property to the respective K-9 handlers, and one to welcome in our latest K-9, K-9 Maui. And if I may, I'd like to acknowledge all the people that are surrounding the perimeter of this room that have come to support our K-9 unit, our current and former employees, and our partner in public safety, Chief Lance Harris, and Chief Mike Eternal from the Mount Prospect Police Department is here joining us as well. The Village of Arlington Heights Police Department has a number of dual-purpose patrol working dogs, commonly referred to as police canine, deployed as a valuable police resource. The demands of a working dog limit the canine service life. As such, the Illinois Police Dog Retirement Act provides the officer who partnered with the canine during its years of service the ability to accept, transfer, and ownership of the canine through the appropriate process, and that's why we're here. The first canine dog that is going to retire next Friday, June 13th, is K-9 Yara. And if I may, K-9 Yara is a Dutch shepherd who was whelped in Holland in September of 2013 and was selected to join the Arlington Heights Police Department in August of 2015 by her handler Sergeant Jeff Tagmire. During her nearly decade of service, Yara was deployed in over 220 requesting-- a request for police canine service, participated in over 150 public demonstrations, and countless meet and greets with the citizens of Arlington Heights. Yara competed in a mult-- in multiple K-9 Olympic events over the years, taking home many awards, including first place in tracking. Yara has assisted in multiple local and federal-- Yara has assisted multiple local and federal agencies through the years and was instrumental in locating several million dollars in narcotics and drug-related currency. Yara successfully tracked down and located four fleeing criminals, one of them hiding in a garbage can in the backyard of a residence, and another just committed burglary in a neighboring town. Yara also located four firearms that were used in commission of a felony and discarded by the offender. Over the years, Yara has developed a celebrity status in the town, and she will miss having her handler drive her around to all her public appearances and people talking, taking countless pictures with her. Yara has plans to still use her searching abilities in retirement, but only seek out snacks. The second canine retiring is K-9 Argos. K-9 Argos was born in Slovakia in 2018 and imported to the United States by Tar Heel kennels. Officer Mike Butler drove to North Carolina in December of 2019 and selected Argos as the department's newest midnight shift canine. In the five years that Mike and Argos have worked together, they've responded to hundreds of emergency calls, participated in public canine unit demonstrations, and had countless interactions with the residents of Arlington Heights. Argos has been instrumental in the capture of numerous violent criminals, including two offenders wanted for homicide. He has found guns, evidence dropped by fleeing suspects, millions of dollars in illegal drugs, and assisted in the seizure of more than one-half million dollars in drug-related currency. Argos has tracked suspects wanted for murder and has located lost children. He has bravely protected the men and women of the Arlington Heights Police Department and the residents of the village on calls and in situations that most people never hear about. Argos will be retiring and living out the rest of his life with Mike as his pet. No more tracking armed suspects at 2:00 AM in the snowy January months, no more 16-hour shifts with no sleep, no more long nights spent in the back of a squad car. He'll have a comfortable couch to sleep on, his stuffed animal and ball to play with, and a shade tree in the backyard to sit under and watch the squirrels run by. The retirement is well-deserved.
Mayor, I'll leave it in your hands if you want to address the two ordinances, and then we can move on to the swearing-in.
Yeah, it'd be appropriate this time, Mayor, you have ordinances. Under Illinois law, we do have to approve agreements with the officers to formally transfer ownership of each of these two canine officers, so if it's your pleasure, Mayor, it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion approving-- you can do it in one motion if you want, approving both ordinances at this time.
Okay, so on our agenda here, we have the canine retirement recognition ordinance and the ceremony oath. So our ordinance-- do we have it written out here?
Yeah, both ordinances and-- there's an ordinance for each dog, and there's an agreement for each dog, and they're in-- it's part of your agenda packing, Mayor.
Okay, so you want me to come out there and do it, or--
It's up to you, however you want to do it.
Is it the whereas with as far as--
Oh, you don't have to-- I don't know if you have to read it, just accept a motion approving the ordinances, so.
I think we can just make a motion to approve the ordinances as written, and I would be happy to do so.
Did you want to do that?
Yes.
Okay, so--
And to do both at once?
You can do that if you--
So I move to approve the ordinance as written to transfer ownership of Yara and Argos.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion from the dais or from the audience? Okay, if not, there's a motion made by Trustee Labads and seconded by Trustee Shirley, or-- okay, okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Santa Maria?
Yes.
Trustee Zick?
Yes.
Trustee Manganaro?
Aye.
President Tenalia?
Yes. Okay, what next?
Thank you, Mayor. Now that the ordinance is passed, and it almost sounds inhumane, you know, transfer of property. These are canine heroes, and I'd like to recognize them if you would help me--
Absolutely.
--to present their respective handler with a little handoff from the village and police department.
You want to bring both of them up at one at a time?
Sure.
Mayor, this first shadow box is a memento to K-9 Yara and his handler Sergeant Jeff Tagmire in recognition for their almost nine years of service to the Village of Arlington Heights and its police department. It's a box that encapsulates some prized mementos here, like Yara's leash, her star, her collar, and a photo. I'd like to present this to Sergeant Tagmire.
Yeah.
Let's do a little picture. You want to give him a moment to say something?
Sure.
Sergeant, would you like to-- I know you don't want me to hold.
Yeah.
Do you want photos? Well, I want you to say a few words first.
Absolutely. Thank you all for being here and acknowledging the K-9 unit, really appreciate that. It's been an honor being Yara's handler for nearly a decade. It's truly been a blessing that few people get to experience. Sometimes it's just hard to believe how fast time goes by, so I appreciate having this opportunity, and Yara looks forward to retirement. Thank you. Mike, I promise I won't drop this one. This second shadow box is presented to Argos on behalf of the police department to his handler Officer Mike Butler. Not only has Argos served the Village of Arlington Heights admirably for five years, but Mike has served the police department adorably for more than 20, 28 years. I was Mike's field training officer in 1996, and tomorrow Mike is gonna retire. So not only are we gonna transfer ownership of Argos and bid him farewell in retirement, but Mike is going to enjoy his retirement as well, so we're gonna miss both of you. Mike, please accept this shadow box as a token of our appreciation and appreciation for Argos' years of service. Thank you very much.
Okay, enough. Thank you, Chief. Just very, very briefly, I am grateful beyond words for the opportunity that I've had to work for this police department and for this village for all of these years and for the 15 years that I've spent as a dog handler. I'm more grateful to the Chief than I can possibly express. This is the greatest police department to work for, and I'm gonna miss it every day. But I promise that I'm gonna give Argos a happy and long retirement. He's going to enjoy every day that I have with him. Thank you.
We're not gonna get rid of Mike that easy. Those of you that don't know, Mike went and obtained his law degree about six or seven years ago, and he's gonna come back every year and teach and service law update for us, so he's still gonna be a member of the team. One last point of business here, Mayor, if you will, is the recognition of our newest canine, K-9 Maui. The village is proud to introduce the newest member of the police department's public safety team, K-9 Maui. K-9 Maui is a two-year-old Belgian-Malinois-Dutch Shepherd mix who was imported from the Netherlands. The Arlington Heights Police Department partners with the Kane County Sheriff's Department to assist in acquiring and training new canines. Dozens of working breeds from all over the world are vetted for their temperament, suitability, and job function, and sometimes the hardest part, personality, that's commensurate with the police department and community's expectations. The training is consistent-- consists of a rigorous eight-week program necessary to achieve state-of-Illinois canine certification. K-9 Maui and his handler partner Steve Denov will be graduating from the canine program on June 13th. Officer Denov has been with the Arlington Heights Police Department since 2019 and has served in numerous roles, including assignment, most recently as the problem-oriented policing coordinator. Officer Denov has long expressed a passionate interest in joining the canine team and was reassigned earlier this year following a competitive selection process. Serving as a canine handler is a demanding job requiring dedication and hard work and ethics. We are confident Officer Denov and his new partner K-9 Maui will excel in their newest role. Steve, Maui, if you'd step forward, and Mayor, if you would, please.
I can't wait to see him repeat after me. Let's do this fun. Can you get on your knees and make him hold up his-- All right, K-9 Maui. How about if you repeat for him?
Oh, I gotta-- All right. So, K-9 Maui, say aye, K-9 Maui.
Aye, K-9 Maui.
All right. Having been appointed to the office of Arlington Heights-- of the Arlington Heights Police Department K-9 unit--
Having been appointed to the Arlington Heights Police Department K-9 unit--
In the Village of Arlington Heights--
In the Village of Arlington Heights--
In the County of Cook--
In the County of Cook--
I do solemnly swear and affirm--
I do solemnly swear and affirm--
That I will support the Constitution of the United States--
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Eat lots of treats-- no, no, strike that. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois--
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties--
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office according to the best of my ability.
Of the office according to the best of my ability.
Excellent job. Well done.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful job.
Congratulations, Steve. I'd like you to present Maui with his canine star, 358K. Congratulations.
Should we take him over there? Nice job. Okay. All right. Thanks, guys. You bet. Good luck to you. Is there any chance you can get all the dogs up here? It would be a nightmare.
Sergeant Tagmire? You think we could get a total of all the dogs, or--
Is it possible to get all the dogs up here, even the neighbors?
Two of the Arlington dogs.
That's cool.
Yeah? All right, well, why don't you come on up here? I understand they're okay people, you know, the dogs we're not so worried about. Come on up. Here, you get in the middle. What do you think, guys? Can you do it or not? Come on up over here on this side. I'll stand in the middle.
All right, one, two, and three. Very good, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you very much, Chief. All right, so we'll take a minute here. If people want to exit, we can do that, and I know a lot of folks came for that presentation. It was wonderful. Okay, we're gonna get back going here. The next item of business is the presentation of the 2025 National Community Survey results from Polco. I'll call on Manager Recos for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Starting in 2023, we began a biannual process of doing a community survey every two years as part of the run-up to our strategic priorities process, which is gonna occur later this summer. This survey covers a variety of community issues, and it's unique in that we aren't only comparing to ourselves and previous years, but we're also comparing to a sample of other communities from around the country. And so it's really the National Community Survey that we're gonna be doing, so it gives us the ability to really analyze these things on a lot of levels. Tonight, we have Representative Polco who conducted the survey, Jason Newmeyer, who's gonna be presenting the results, and while I'm sure Jason always does a great job, this is a tough act to follow, so-- I'll let Jason take it away.
All right, well, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Yeah, thank you so much. I was saying, this is my eighth or ninth presentation, and this is by far the best start to any one of these meetings, so that was very neat. I'm glad I was here for that. I am happy to be here tonight to present the results for the National Community Survey, second annual here for Arlington Heights. Before I begin, on behalf of myself, my Polco coworkers, I would like to extend a thank you to Abyss Mead. I know she's not here right now, but she worked very closely with us through the development and implementation process, provided thoughtful feedback, and helped us every step of the way. I also would like to acknowledge my colleague Logan Kirk, who was Arlington Heights NCS Project Manager and did a bulk of the work for this important project. Before we begin, a little bit about who we are, before we dive into a summary of those results. Polco is an online community engagement polling platform, and we work with hundreds of local governments nationwide to help with resident and employee feedback. We actually do about 125 of these surveys around the US every year. We're hoping to hit 140 this year, so if we come back in a couple of years, we'll update that number for you. Polco merged with the National Research Center in 2019, and NRC is best known for these types of benchmark surveys, such as the National Community Survey, the National Employee Survey, and the Community Assessment Survey for older adults, among a few others. NRC was founded in 1994, and we've worked with hundreds of jurisdictions nationwide to build the largest benchmark database of local public opinion in the United States. We also partner, as you can see here, very closely with ICMA and the National League of Cities, as well as many, many other local government leaders, the Alliance for Innovation, Engage Local Government Leaders, and a few academic partners as well, including the Hoover Institute at Stanford University, the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and the Harvard Kennedy School of Government, to name a few. Now, before we turn to those results, I do want to emphasize there are a few common ways that a lot of these results are used, which was hinted at here early before. Most commonly, the jurisdictions that we work with will use their survey data to monitor trends in resident opinion over time and to inform the budgeting process and the strategic planning. And importantly, these results allow you to benchmark your community's specific characteristics against those same characteristics in other communities using our national database. So the hope here tonight is that as these findings are presented, it's going to spur ideas for where you might want to dig a little bit deeper. All right, so the National Community Survey, or the NCS, is a standardized five-page comprehensive survey, and it allows municipalities to assess resident opinion about their community and about their local government. The NCS focuses on the livability of Arlington Heights and categorizes the survey questions into these 10 facets of community livability shown here on the screen. The NCS includes items within each of these 10 facets to provide a full picture of how residents feel about their community, and finally, and maybe most importantly, these facets also tend to align with municipal departments, making it easy for staff to quickly find the information that is of most importance to them in that final report of results that was shared with you all. So all households within Arlington Heights were eligible to participate in this most recent National Community Survey. A list of all households within the ZIP code serving Arlington Heights was purchased based on updated listings from the United States Postal Service, and then using your GIS boundary files that were provided by the village, addresses located outside of the boundary for Arlington Heights were removed from the potential list of households, and then from that final list, a random selection of 3,000 households received the survey invitation. Those 3,000 households received their first mailing beginning on February 14th, and the survey remained open for six weeks. The first mailing was a postcard inviting the household to participate in the survey. The second mailing contained a cover letter with instructions, the five-page survey questionnaire, and a postage-paid return envelope. Both the postcard and the cover letter included a web link to give residents the opportunity to respond to the survey online if they would choose, and all follow-up mailings asked those who had not yet completed the survey to do so, and those who had already completed the survey to not respond twice. The survey was available in English and Spanish, and all mailings contain paragraphs in both languages instructing participants on how to complete the survey in their preferred language. A total of 468 completed surveys were received from these efforts, as you can see, providing a response rate of 16% and a margin of error of plus or minus 5%. We then compared the demographic profile of those 468 respondents to that of all adults in Arlington Heights using the most recent census and American Community Survey data, and we waited the final survey results. Waiting is a survey research best practice, and it overall helps to improve the representativeness of the data in front of you. In addition to this randomly selected probability sample of households, a link to an online community-wide open participation survey was also publicized by the village. The open participation survey was available to all village residents and became available on March 29th. That survey remained open for two weeks, and 497 additional responses were received. The presentation that we're going through tonight and the report of the results that was shared with you are based on the random sample mail-based survey, but all of those responses gathered to the open participation survey were also provided just separately in that full report of results. All right, so one of the major advantages that we'll talk about throughout our presentation tonight is the ability for a local government to participate in benchmarking against other communities around the nation. National Research Center, as I said before, was the first organization to conceive of the idea to create benchmarks for local public opinion. This jurisdiction-- this allows jurisdictions to compare ratings of services to similar services in other communities, and as you can see here, there are more than 500 comparison communities in our national database, representing the opinions of over 50 million residents around the US. All right, so with that, let's turn to a broad overview of results before we hit on some of those key findings found in the report. So in the survey itself, we have two questions that ask directly about those 10 facets of community livability we identified earlier. The first asks residents to rate the quality of each of these 10 facets, and you can see the result in comparison to the national benchmark in the shading on the chart. Here, overall quality ratings for the economy, education, arts and culture, community design, and mobility scored higher than our national comparisons. We ask a second question, then, about those same 10 facets of livability, but this second question is centered on how important residents think it is for the community to focus on each of these 10 facets in the coming two years. So ultimately, we ask about both the quality and the importance of these 10 facets of livability, and we use it to create this, the Quality Importance Gap Analysis, also found in your report. This can be used to help determine those areas of relatively higher importance and lower quality to residents, so those with the largest gap shown on the slide. This chart here is just one of many ways to interpret your data, and it can be used to help identify some of those key findings and to help a community to determine which areas might need additional focus or resource allocation in the coming years and which others are performing well by-- others are performing well by comparison. So of the 122 survey items for which residents provided evaluative ratings, 49 received ratings that were higher than the national benchmark, 73 received similar ratings, and there were none that received ratings that were lower than the five-year rolling average. Ratings are considered similar if they are within 10 points of the national average and higher or lower if they are more than 10 points difference from that average of communities around the US. In addition to the comparison to other communities, we also have comparisons to yourself from the past. So when compared to results for Arlington Heights NCS in 2023, here in 2025, three items received ratings that were statistically higher than the previous survey iteration, 107 received similar ratings, and 12 received lower ratings. Ratings are considered statistically significant if there's plus or minus six percentage point change over the last two years. Now, when we're looking at those trends over time, a trend that we've been seeing nationally and that shows up here in your results for 2025 are some declines in economic and affordability sentiment ratings. You can see here, this is from our National Community Survey benchmark database, so this is the rolling average over this about seven or eight-year period of time, and you can see that some questions regarding availability of affordable quality housing, for example in green, have been declining for some time, but others, like cost of living, the availability of affordable quality food, or the availability of affordable quality health care, have shown some rather large declines, especially in the post-pandemic era. I don't think this will come as a surprise to anyone here, navigating high inflationary times, low consumer sentiment, increasing interest rates. So although we are seeing declines in some of these ratings from past survey efforts, many of them do seem to relate back to this broader national trend. This isn't to say that something should or shouldn't be done, right? That's your decision to make, but hopefully, as we're talking about some of these trends upcoming here, these downward trends, this will help to place these ideas and these affordability measures into a broader context by taking into account the hundreds of communities that are found in our database over the last five years. All right, so with that, I'd like to turn to some highlights, some key findings that our survey research team pulled out here. I'm sure if you've reviewed the report, you'll know that there is a lot of additional data found there, but today, I would just like to focus the rest of the time on some of the items that we found to be most noteworthy in the results from this most recent effort. All right, so first, key finding number one, confidence in local government continues to remain high here in Arlington Heights. Ratings for almost all items related to governance ranked either similar or higher than our national benchmark average, and most were consistent, actually, with the 2023 survey results. Ratings that exceeded the national average included those for the overall direction of Arlington Heights, the government generally acting in the best interest of the community, and the overall confidence in Arlington Heights governance. Additionally, residents were more likely to provide favorable ratings for the value of services for taxes paid in 2025 than in 2024. You can see that item there on the bottom of the slide. Our second key takeaway, residents continue to feel very safe and offered high ratings for safety services. I don't know if everybody left here, but now would be a good time for the police staff to come back in and see their high ratings, but virtually all residents reported feeling very safe in their neighborhood, as well as in the downtown and commercial areas of the village during the day. About nine in 10 residents felt safe from violent crime and from flood, fire, or other natural disaster, and about eight in 10 reported feeling safe from property crime. Each of these items, as you can see, is similar, actually, to our national benchmark averages and similar to the 2023 results. In addition to these feelings of safety, ratings for safety services also remained high, with over 90% of residents offering positive marks for fire services and ambulance or emergency medical services. You can also see around nine in 10 gave praise for fire prevention and safety education, and eight in 10 did the same for police services and crime prevention. Notably, the rating for crime prevention ranked higher than other communities around the nation. Our third key takeaway here, Arlington Heights economy, both a priority and a strength. When taking a look at ratings for the economy, the economy actually ranked second in overall importance when we looked at those other 10 facets of community livability, and likewise, residents tended to offer very high evaluative ratings for survey items related to the economy. Higher items were seen, were reported for, excuse me, the overall quality of business and service establishments, the vibrancy of the downtown and commercial area, overall economic health, Arlington Heights both as a place to work and as a place to visit, and the variety of business and service establishments along with shopping opportunities. Conversely, this is one of those affordability measures that we talked about at the beginning. About one-third of residents gave positive ratings for overall cost of living in the village. This is a similar rating to our national benchmarks, but did show a seven-point decline from the 2023 effort. Key finding number four, community design and housing availability may be an area of opportunity for the village. As we can see here, many of the ratings for survey items related to community design did rank higher than the benchmark, highlighting that residents tend to feel more positively about some of these aspects than other community residents or residents in other communities. However, some downward trends did emerge in the 2025 results, which might warrant further focus and monitoring. You can see the three here in the middle. These include well-designed neighborhoods, well-planned residential growth, and the overall land use planning and zoning efforts. All right, next, satisfaction with mobility was high among, excuse me, yes, satisfaction with mobility was high among residents in the village. Arlington Heights residents reported both a high usage rate of public transportation and high ratings for the quality of the services themselves. About half of residents indicated that they had used public transportation in the last 12 months, and about seven in 10 reported walking instead of driving in the last 12 months, both of which represent a higher usage rate than in communities around the nation. And likewise, above-average quality ratings were provided for the ease of walking, traffic flow, overall quality of the transportation system, and the ease of travel by public transportation, although, as we see again, traffic flow on major streets saw a downward trend. In addition to these overall usage rates for mobility, some transportation services also tended to be well-received. 85% of respondents offered praise for snow removal services, which ranked higher than the benchmark. I'm a resident, I don't know if I should say this here, I'm a resident of Green Bay, Wisconsin, and I was very jealous when I saw the 85% snow removal score here ranking higher than the benchmark. In addition, about eight in 10 were satisfied with street cleaning. Nearly three-quarters, as you can see, gave high marks to street lighting, and around seven in 10 residents were pleased with sidewalk maintenance and traffic enforcement. Again, we can see traffic enforcement saw a downward trend from 2023. And then finally, education, arts, and culture consistently ranked higher than the national average. This one is impressive. Each item related to the facet of education, arts, and culture ranked higher than the national average, and of largest note, ratings for K-12 education ranked much higher than our national benchmark, meaning that the rating was more than 20 points above the five-year rolling average of those communities in our database. Others included ratings for opportunities to attend special events and festivals, as well as the ability to attend cultural arts and music activities, overall adult educational opportunities, the community's support for the arts, and finally, the availability of affordable quality childcare and preschool. Now, in addition to these standardized questions that are asked on every national community survey around the US, the survey also leaves some room for custom questions that were developed by the village to focus on some additional special topics, so we'll cover just a few of these here next. One question sought insight on the utilization of the Groot composting program, as well as general composting preferences, and you can see here in response, about one in 10 residents reported using Groot's composting program, and only 2% said they used a different composting program. About half of respondents said they don't use a composting program and they don't plan to, although four in 10 said that they would, do not currently use a composting program, but would be open to doing it in the future, so a true 50/50 split here of respondents. Another question asked residents to share how much of a source they considered several information sources to be in obtaining information about village government and its activities, events, and services. The top four items are shown here, starting with the largest source being the village website, followed by word of mouth, the village e-newsletter, and finally, local media. Ratings stayed largely consistent from the 2023 survey, with a slightly higher rating for the village e-newsletter as a major source in 2025, and a slightly lower rating for local media as a major source in 2025. And then finally, residents were also asked if they had attended several events hosted by the village in the last two years. The Arlington Alfresco Outdoor Dining Experience was identified as the most attended among the list, followed by The Sounds of Summer Concert and Harmony Fest featuring The Taste of Arlington Heights. Residents were also asked if they did not attend, if they chose not to attend, or they simply did not know about this event. Results indicated that the least well-known events in the community were the Community Open House and the Autumn Harvest. So these are the five key takeaways that we, the survey research team at Polco, pulled out of these most recent results. Confidence in local government remains high. Residents continue to feel very safe and continue to offer high ratings for safety services. Arlington Heights economy, both a priority and a strength. Community design and housing availability may be an opportunity for the village. Satisfaction with mobility, high among residents, and that education, arts, and culture items consistently ranked higher than the national average. And before we turn to some question and answer, if we have any, I do want to point out that if you'd wish to dig deeper and learn more about the opinions and preferences of your residents, you can actually continue to engage with the community on Polco. You have one of the larger subscriber bases on Polco. Over 1,300 residents have subscribed to your Polco profile, and that you have an opportunity to create a consistent dialogue with those community members. You can see here, you can use various feedback tools like customizable polls, surveys, live events, they can include maps, images, videos, or links to better inform your respondents. You don't have to do this on your own. Our team is here to help. I'm here to help, and you have a dedicated customer success manager to help post any additional content that you'd like. All right, so with that, I will catch my breath. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the process, about the presentation, about the report of results. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jason. Nicely done.
Thanks.
Staff, anything to add before we go to the board?
No, I mean, I think, you know, the idea of this is for this to inform the board and staff and kind of as we plan our coming years, and so, no, I, you know, have to answer any questions. And the other thing is with our subscription to Polco, we do have the opportunity to do other follow-up surveys if we so choose, and so that's something to keep in mind as well, because it's a really nice tool and it's very easy to use, and we found Polco very easy to work with.
All right, well, very good. Thanks. Well, I'll turn it over to the board, then. Anyone on this side, questions for Jason? Trustee Bertucci?
Thank you. Thank you, Jason, for your presentation. Just a couple of questions for clarity.
Sure.
Based on my career and also one of my favorite classes was statistics, so.
Me too. Glad to hear it.
Anyways, the response rate of 16% of the 3,000.
Right.
How does that compare? Is that, first of all, obviously, you feel 3,000 was a proper sample?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We do 3,000 around the US. 16% response rate is actually probably toward the upper end. We're seeing about 12% to 15% response rates generally, and as you know in your stats class, it's that number of responses that creates that margin of error, so we should be really happy that we had 400-some-odd responses. That gets us that plus or minus 5%.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. And of the, so tell me what the sample population was, so to speak, and I don't mean, you know what I mean by population, not population, number of people, but.
Right.
But what you were, was all the, was all the other sample communities of the, of same likeness as us, or was it an overview of various types of communities?
It's an overview of various types of communities, so there are some large, some small. We do have the opportunity to do a custom subset of comparisons to more, you know, like-minded, or, you know, similarly aligned in demographics or region if we want to in the future, but the comparisons that you had here were to the entire national database, so all 500 communities that we have there over the last five years. Yeah, so some large, some small, some in the middle.
Okay, great. Yeah, great. Okay, that's all I have. I just wanted to get a perspective on the survey.
All right, thank you.
Sample.
This side? Trustee Lebedz?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. It's very interesting, and it definitely gives us a feel for what it's like. Trustee Bertucci asked the question that I was curious about with sample size.
Sure.
But as of the 500 communities, how do we fit in, in size-wise? Like, are we in the middle? Are we towards the smaller?
Probably the first percent, probably the, toward the lower end, I would say. We can get you the exact rank. In addition, I don't know if we've shared the national benchmarking tables, but every item will actually give you your overall rank and percentile, so you could see every question, we were number six out of 500 here, which I think you were for K-12 education. We were number 382nd, or whatever, on this other item. But I can get you that breakdown offhand, I would assume toward the bottom quartile, so bottom 25%, but I'll get that number and we can, we can share it with you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was just curious how we fit in.
Yes.
To the bigger picture.
Yes, no, yes, I can get that.
Thank you. Otherwise, I have no other questions. Very interesting.
Thanks.
Trustee Z.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Jason. Again, great report. Kind of a data geek, so I enjoyed, I enjoyed going through all this, so thank you very much. But actually, the question I have isn't so much for you, it's for us and for Randy also. A lot of great data here, a lot of interesting things. What do we do with this data from here? Obviously, we're gonna have our strategic planning, and this type of information will help with that, but do we take this out to the individual departments and have them parse through it and give their feedback based on, based on the information?
And one of the next things that we're gonna do is we are gonna be talking about this at an upcoming department director meeting, and then I'll be following up with these other department directors one-on-one as well about their, any specific issues that they, we've identified as part of this that, you know, pertain to our operations. Obviously, there's some things that aren't applicable, like education is not under our purview, but we are gonna, we share that with our community partners so that they can make something out of it. So we do do a little bit of a deep dive on this and use it as a way to kind of inform our planning as we get into budget season and as we, you know, further get into strategic priority discussions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, a couple of comments. I guess one question is I'm very interested in the further engagement with the community, especially in the areas of community planning. If we undertake that kind of engagement, what's the timeframe for us to be able to get actionable information out of it?
We can launch anything online as soon as you say go, and we have, as I said, you have about 1,300 subscribers already, so when we launch that information, they'll get an email directly because they've provided an email and consented to get an email from you all, so we will have that right away, and then it's a matter of how quick can we get it out to the community, you know, through your channels as well. So results are live. As soon as you get a de-identifiable number, which is usually 25 responses, we'll share that data with you right away.
Okay. And then from what you just said, by definition, that will be a convenient sample rather than a random sample?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
And would definitely like to see the rankings.
Yes, yeah, we can, I'll make sure to share the, yeah, the national benchmarking table. Every question will show you the rank, the number you're compared to, the percentile, and your overall percentage.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Anyone else said it? Trustee Donington.
Thank you. I do have one question. For the information about traffic enforcement, should we assume that there, that means it's not enough traffic enforcement, or could it be that there would be too much traffic enforcement in some cases?
The rate, the question is going to be along the lines of please rate the current, please rate the current, let me get you the actual one. On the back of the report, we have the actual survey itself. That's in question Q7. I know that. I just want to make sure that I'm getting the actual stem here for you. Please rate each of the following as they relate to Arlington Heights as a community. So traffic flow on major streets, I would assume, or what was the, traffic enforcement?
Traffic enforcement was a.
My assumption would be a low rating. My assumption would be a low rating means not enough, would be my assumption, but I guess we could dig more into that maybe and determine exactly what that's meaning. But the rating, ranking system is excellent, good, fair, poor. So I don't think if you wanted more traffic enforcement, you would say excellent. That would be the way I would think of it, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Well, thanks so much.
Jason, thank you for your work. Appreciate it very much. I think you, in many cases, shared what a lot of us already know.
Right.
And feel like about our community here, but it's always great to compare how we do nationally on these things. So thanks for being here and doing it.
Thank you, yes. And if anything comes up, feel free to send me an email, and we can keep the conversation going.
Very good.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on. So right now, I do believe it's time when I should be opening the hearing. Is that correct? Okay, so I hereby call to order the public hearing concerning the village's two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-nine draft consolidated plan, including the draft two thousand twenty-five annual action plan and community development block grants budget. Notice of this public hearing has been published in the Daily Herald on May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, in accordance with federal law. So I'd like to have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Bertucci?
Here.
Trustee Zick?
Here.
Trustee Schwingback? Trustee Santa Maria?
Here.
Trustee Mangano?
Here.
Trustee Dunnington?
Here.
Trustee Shirley?
Here.
Trustee Labets?
Here.
President Talia?
Here. Okay, then I hereby declare this public hearing is open, and the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development requires the local governing body of a municipality to hold a public hearing prior to submission of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-nine consolidated plan and prior to its later adoption and submission to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So at this point, I think it's appropriate to call Nora Boyer up. She is our housing planner, and she'll present the status report for the village of two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-nine draft consolidated action plan, including the draft two thousand twenty-five annual action plan and community development block grants budget. After the introduction, I'll entertain questions from the village trustees, and after that, we'll call on any member of the public that desires to be heard in this matter. So Nora?
Mayor Talia, could I quickly just?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. I wanted to call on trustee Santa Maria really quickly before we start this dialogue.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I would like to recuse myself from this conversation as Shelter Inc., where I am CEO, was an applicant for this block grant. So I would like to just remain as not part of the conversation.
Very well.
Thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you. Okay, now, I believe it's appropriate to call Nora Boyer.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. McCullough, for giving up your seat for me to make this presentation. The Community Development Block Grant Program is fifty, going on fifty-one years old, and the village of Arlington Heights has participated in the program all that time. The village is what's called an entitlement community, which means HUD notifies the village of our annual grant amount in community development block grant funds each year. But as a condition for receiving those funds, the village is required to adopt every five years a consolidated plan and every one year an annual action plan. The consolidated plan and annual action plan explain the needs and priorities in the village and also its plans for using the community development block grant funding for community development activities, primarily to benefit low and moderate income residents of the village. There will be two public hearings, as required under the regulations, for the five-year consolidated plan and the one-year action plan. It is one of the years that a five-year plan is due this year. Tonight is the first of the public hearings. The draft consolidated plan will then be made available for a thirty-day public comment period, and there will be a second public hearing tentatively scheduled before the village board on July twenty-first. The entirety of the draft consolidated plan was included in the packet for your review and the public's review, and again, it'll be made available for that thirty-day public comment period. One of the items for consideration under the annual action plan is how the village would use its community development block grant funds for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six program year. The CDBG funding is on the federal fiscal year, which starts on October first, ends on September thirtieth. For this year, the village was just notified of its federal two thousand twenty-five entitlement grant amount, which is three hundred thirty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. We estimate that there is about ninety thousand dollars in carryover funds from prior years for a total estimated budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six year of four hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. There are some categories of programs under the CDBG program. Some of them come with spending caps. One of those is the public service activity cap. Public services, otherwise possibly known as social services, can be funded with community development block grants, but only fifteen percent of the grant amount can be used for that sort of purpose. So for this year, that cap amount is forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. The administrative cap is twenty percent of the available dollars, which is at sixty-six thousand five hundred for this year. Historically, the village has funded both the public services and the administrative costs at the cap amount. So then the difference between the revenue available and those two caps is what's available, is the largest portion of the amounts, and it is available for brick and mortar projects or sometimes referred to as construction or economic development activities. And that amounts three hundred and six dollars and three hundred and six thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars. The own, the other calculation that needs to be made is that the funds need to be used principally for low and moderate income persons and households. The village has historically used a hundred percent of its community development block grant dollars for low and moderate income households. The requirement is seventy percent, so I have that amount in the report. This may come into play even when the goal is to spend a hundred percent on lower and moderate income residents. You know, if you were, if you were to have an educational program or a counseling program and ten people came and nine of them were low and moderate income, so they met the qualifications, it would mean that you wouldn't have to dismiss the one person who you either don't have information on or may not qualify. So there's some wiggle room in there for making programs more user-friendly and accessible by having that requirement at seventy percent, although, as I said, the village has historically met the hundred percent. For this year, the village received seventeen community development block grant applications. The total was six hundred and seventy thousand and fifty dollars. The requests were, the first one I'll mention is from Family Forward. It is a public service application. This year, they're receiving thirty-five hundred dollars in grant funds, and they've requested thirty-five hundred for the coming year. Resources for Community Living, excuse me, has received grant funding from the village in the past. Just in this one last year, the current year, actually, they did not receive a grant. The organization was going through a reorganization at the time, applications were due, and so it was missed. But they are requesting six thousand dollars for the coming year. Children's Advocacy Center for the Child Victim and Witness Services Program, they're receiving five thousand dollars this year and are requesting six thousand for next year. Connections for Care is a transportation program for elderly persons and/or persons with disabilities to medical appointments. They have a five thousand dollar grant this year and are requesting six thousand. Suburban Primary Health Care Access to Care Program is a subsidized medical care program. They're receiving sixty-five hundred dollars this year and are requesting seven thousand for next year. Six is the Wings Program. They're requesting funding for services at their emergency shelter safe house. The grant amount for the agency this year is seven thousand, and they're requesting seven thousand for next year. Lifespan Operates the Victims of Domestic Violence Program. Their grant amount this year is five thousand, and they're requesting ten thousand for next year. Northwest Compass is, has been providing housing counseling and homeless diversion programs. Their grant this year is five thousand, and they're requesting ten thousand for next year. Northwest Center for Sexual Assault is a sexual violence intervention program. They have five thousand dollar grant this year and are requesting twelve thousand for next year. Journeys the Road Home offers homeless services. They're receiving ninety-three hundred dollars this year and are requesting fifteen thousand. Clearbrook is requesting funding to do a kitchen remodeling primarily at a, one of their group homes in Arlington Heights. They did some renovations to group homes this year, or they're, actually, they're in progress now at about forty-one thousand, and their request is for twenty-seven nine fifty. Glen Kirk has also submitted a request for rehabilitation at two of their group homes. You can see the purposes of the funding on the slide. We have, the village has provided funding for group home renovations to Glen Kirk previously, although not in the current year, and they're requesting thirty-three thousand one hundred. Full Circle Communities is requesting funding to support or fund part of the cost of public infrastructure improvements for the Grace Terrace Development on Arlington Heights Road. They're not receiving funding, CDBG funding this year, and they're requesting a hundred thousand dollars for next year. The village of Arlington Heights, through the Housing Commission, has requested for the group home rehab program, a hundred and ten thousand for next year. It's ninety thousand this year. And for the single-family rehab loan program, the budget is sixty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight this year. They, the Housing Commission requested a hundred thousand for next year. Under the Department of Public Works, the funding for infrastructure projects in low and moderate income areas this year is seventy thousand, requesting a hundred and fifty thousand for next year. This is for infrastructure improvements in census block grant, block group areas that are determined to be low and moderate income by HUD. And the last request is for costs, administrative costs for the CDBG program. The allocated amount this year is sixty-eight thousand four hundred, and the request for next year is sixty-six thousand five hundred. Again, the amount of funding that's expected to be available next year is the new grant funds from the federal two thousand twenty-five budget at three hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-seven, ninety thousand dollars in carryover from prior years, so a total grant availability of forty, four hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. This chart shows, the first column is the adopted budget for the current year. It shows what all of the agencies that have applied for funding are receiving this year. The middle column is what the grant requests are for the coming year, and staff is providing in the far right-hand column its recommendations on funding. These recommendations are based on prior year activities and funded amounts, information in the grant applications, and then actual experience in what, what has been utilized by the different agencies or under the different village programs. So we have the revenue at the top at the forty, four hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. The public service or social service cap for this year is forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. That's based on that fifty, fifteen percent maximum. That amount is lower than in the current year, when it was fifty-one thousand three hundred. That's primarily, the decrease is primarily because the amount is actually fifteen percent of the new grant amount, which is the three hundred and thirty-two, seven forty-seven, plus any program income received. The village receives as program income repayments from the single-family rehab program. And unfortunately, this year, to date, for the program year, we have not had any loans repaid, and that's the primary reason that the cap amount for this year is lower than last year. So the staff's recommendations, as I said, are shown in the column in red. Because of the caps and the amount of funds that are available, what staff looked at doing was keeping the smaller grants the same as they are this year without decreases and welcoming back the Resources for Community Living program for a small grant. And then for the larger grants, because we have to decrease to allocations to, in total of the cap or less, we're suggesting fourteen or fifteen hundred dollar decreases in the three largest grants. So those are shown there. Under the Construction and Economic Development category, as explained earlier, individual grant applications were submitted by Clearbrook and also by Glen Kirk. What staff is recommending is that the kind of umbrella program of the group home rehab program be funded at eighty thousand eight hundred dollars. And as has been done in the past, that the Housing Commission look at those two applications, vet them thoroughly, and determine whether to fund them and at what amount under the eighty thousand eight hundred. There's a sufficient amount of funding there for both of those projects, plus some contingency funding or any emergency needs that might come up during the year. The single-family rehab program is recommended for funding at about seventy-five thousand. That's a typical amount. And also, the public infrastructure project is recommended at a hundred and fifty thousand, which has also been a typical amount, although last year was somewhat less. Staff is not recommending funding for the Full Circle Communities Grace Terrace Project. Again, they requested a hundred thousand dollars. The background on that, and I did talk to HUD about this request, is that CDBG funding cannot be used for housing new construction. The only part of the project that could possibly be funded with CDBG funding would be the publicly-owned public improvements associated with the project. They did provide me with a list and an accounting of what they expect that amount to be, which was about four hundred thousand dollars. Staff was, is hesitant about the request, however, since a hundred thousand dollars would be a large portion of the total CDBG budget for this year. And also, we would be responsible for and would need to do the administrative task of ensuring compliance with the federal regulations for the entire amount of the public improvements of four hundred thousand dollars, not just the one hundred thousand. So there is a cost to the village and a staff burden there, which were the main reasons for not recommending funding of that request. I think that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicants for the CDBG funds were invited to come tonight, so hopefully, they're here. If you have any questions about any particular grant applications, there may be a few of them who would like to speak to you to talk about their projects and their experiences. And they're also, since it is a public hearing, we're also open to taking any other kind of comments at this time on the draft consolidated plan that was distributed.
Okay, very good, Nora. I know this is really always a difficult task to try and figure out what to do with this. This is the thirteenth time that I've gone through this in my time as being an elected official here, and it's always hard to imagine how do you say no, or how do you cut the numbers down from where they want to be? So it's never an easy task, so thank you for working hard on it as you do. I said before that what we'll do is we'll go to the board for questions, and then we'll go to the audience. So we'll go to the board first. Anyone up here that have some questions? We'll start on this side this time. Trustee Shirley?
Yeah, Nora, I'm just curious, are all these firms or agencies or whatever we call, are they all not-for-profits?
Yes, they are.
So I just point out, I thought Full Circle was for-profit. At least during their presentations, they presented it as such, and that's why I asked that, why they, you know, and that's fine, you guys are not funding them, but I was just curious. So all the others are not-for-profits, and I didn't, I kind of would think that that would be, that would be necessary. So all the others are not-for-profits and I didn't, I kind of would think that that would be, that would be necessary to apply.
Um, under the federal regulations, I don't think it's necessary to apply. The activity needs to be, meet the purposes of the grant.
Okay. Okay. And maybe I misunderstood about Full Circle, I'm not sure, but I was just curious about that.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Trustees Libeds?
Just quickly, I might, I would like to echo what Mayor Tenalia said, and that is also my thirteenth time going through this. And it's always difficult to have to say, well, we really are restricted as to the amount we can give to any one of these agencies because everyone is so deserving of what you do. And you work so hard to help the people in our communities and people in other communities. And I know that you also have to go from community to community to cobble together additional funding to take care of your, your clientele and to, to further your mission. So I just want to thank everyone here for what you do. And I want to thank Nora for what she does with this because it's a lot of work and I appreciate it very much. And there was a mention, I think, and I'm not finding it, but of possible elimination of this program?
Is that? Yeah, the information that I have is that the CDBG program was eliminated in the House Budget Bill that was passed. But there is a significant debate going in, on, in the Senate with regard to their budget bill, so we'll just have to see.
Yeah, remains to be seen. We'll hope that we can carry forward with this. So, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Bertucci.
Thank you, Mayor. Nora, can you put up the slide that showed the recommendation from staff? Okay. Did you, did I hear you say that there, this is a list of the seventeen organizations that applied? There was no other organizations?
Correct.
Okay. Cause now I'm, I'm just a little confused because I don't want, because I don't want Shelter to be like, so, Karina, did you? So how did, how did they not appear on the list?
Shelter Inc. currently has a sub-recipient agreement on some funds that were from a prior year to this, but they did not apply for the twenty-five, twenty-six year.
Does that make sense, Karina?
She's recused herself.
Because she didn't need to recuse herself then, I guess.
Recused herself.
Pardon me?
What's your question? I'm sorry?
I got, well, I'm just asking almost Hart or somebody then. So then if that's, if, if, if you're saying she didn't apply, then Hart does, she, she didn't necessarily need to recuse herself, is that correct?
So Trustee Santa Maria did not, Shelter Inc. is the applicant, not, not Trustee Santa Maria in her.
Correct. I'm sorry, but thank you for clarifying.
No, my understanding is because of the connection between Trustee Santa Maria and the applicant that she.
But who, who, she, Nora just said that Shelter did not apply.
I have to go to staff.
Yeah, did not this year.
Okay, so, so trustee Santa Maria did not necessarily have to recuse herself?
I can't speak to that.
Did you, so I?
Well, she's, she's. He has recused herself.
I don't want to put her on the spot.
Okay, I thought, I, I thought.
So, I think we can clear this up at another time. I don't want to put her in a bad position here. She's done what she believed was correct in recusing herself, and I think that was good. It's not on this list. It's not going to be a bone of contention, so I think we're all on good paper with this right now. Is that correct, Nora?
Yes.
Okay. Was there something else? Sorry.
I, I thought I heard trustee Santa Maria say that she was recusing herself because she did apply, because the organization did apply. So I'm going to just leave it at that and let you guys clarify it off, off mine. So, okay.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So that's noted, and I'm sure that our staff and trustee Santa Maria will talk about that. And if there's anything differently.
We'll provide clarity on that matter before the next time it's discussed.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Dunnington, I think?
No, I'm looking forward to hearing from anyone in the audience.
Okay, very good. And so that's exactly where we're at, as we said. I don't have any other comments other than what I said before. I see all these, you know, wonderful faces. It's, it seems like a little bit less than in past years. There were times when the room was full on both sides, so it's, it's a smaller group. But you all have a chance to speak. We do have a three-minute rule, but you guys have all been through this before. So anyone who feels the need, it's not a requirement, but you can come up and say whatever you need to say about your organization or about the award here tonight for these financial benefits for your program. So anybody, raise your hand or just step up. If the next person wants to get to the back of the room and then we'll call you up, come on up. Introduce yourself, say your name, your address for the record, please.
My name is Kim Berenberg. I'm the CEO of Glenn Kirk, who is one of the organizations that is up for discussion this evening. My address, my home address or my work address? We are based in Northbrook.
Becky, the, the work address is appropriate for this?
That would be fine.
Okay.
We're located at thirty-five oh four Commercial Avenue in Northbrook. We have group homes throughout the north and northwest suburbs. I appreciated the comments about what nonprofits have to do in order to piece together capital projects. We are funded by the Department of Human Services through the Medicaid program. So if you're reading the federal news right now, you understand that our funding is not only under fire, but often does not include any capital monies whatsoever unless we go for special CDBG grants. So I appreciate the consideration under the group home program that you have for the two projects that we have. We do have three group homes in Arlington Heights that, that provide housing to eighteen people with intellectual and developmental disabilities.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the work you do. It's wonderful.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the consideration.
All right. And next, and if there's anyone else, go ahead and take her place back there.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening Nora. Nice to meet everyone and see everyone again. My name is Letitia Ferreto and I'm with Wings. I'm the Government Relations Manager. And I will be brief, of course, but I just want to say thank you. I understand Nora, you have an extremely hard job, just to reiterate everyone's comments to balance out our requests. And I understand and respect our award. I just want to mention a few things about what Wings has done since the last time I've been here. And also what I admire most about Wings. I've been, I'm finishing my sixth year with Wings. And in my role and as I've seen everything happen over the past six years of COVID and now the new administration, you know, combating CDBG, what I admire most about Wings is regardless of our, the position of the staff or the leader, our creativity and our ability to pivot when helping the client and our tenacious leadership is what continues to drive who we are. We, on average each year, we have served an average of thirty-two to thirty-five residents of Arlington Heights, which is a three percent, approximate three percent of Wings overall agency-wide clients, with ten to fifteen percent of those clients being served by this program. And then I would just like to share a few things that have happened, like I mentioned, over the past year. We have expanded, we have a hospital program in the northwest suburbs, and with that, we serve four separate hospitals. And we have recently expanded into Chicago. And so with that, we are partnering with the University of UIC. And six partners, six peer sister domestic violence partners and three other hospitals underneath them. We have also expanded our counseling services within the community. We have, through our adult and children's counseling with that, through the Foglia Family Resource Center. We've also expanded our partners so that we can continue to meet our clients where they are at, regardless of geographic location, with linguistic and cultural specific services. And then we've also expanded our Survivor Lifeline Program, which is a mentorship program so that when someone has come through our services, they've walked the path, they've walked their journey so that they, you know, can truly transition from being a victim to a survivor. And they're on the other side and they're able to offer those learned skill sets. They're able to do that through our Survivor Lifeline Program. And so that's really all I have to offer tonight. I just want to say thank you so much for your continued support. If you have any, if anyone is ever looking for us to be able to come into the community and offer, you know, our training on Domestic Violence 101, whether that's in the schools or your churches and synagogues, we're happy to do so. And if you want to get more involved, feel like, seeWingsProgram.com. That's pretty good.
Your timing is excellent.
All right. Thank you again so much.
Thank you. All right. Next.
Good evening. Hello. Thank you for having us today. My name is Denise Reyes. I work for Full Circle Communities. Thank you so much for the consideration of our application. Completely understand the outcome of this, but wanted to come up here and give our thanks. And just for, you know, some of the new trustees that we haven't met, I know some of you are very familiar with our project. Excuse me. This is a twenty-five unit permanent supportive development for persons with disabilities with a preference for veterans earning thirty and fifty percent AMI. Full Circle will be the owner and operator. We are a nonprofit organization and hold on to all of our properties long-term. We don't do any disposition. We're going to be a member of this community and we're very excited to bring this project to Arlington Heights. This is going to be a two-story, twenty-five units, twenty of which are going to be one bedrooms, two, five are going to be two bedrooms. And the amenities include onsite management, service provision and coordination, computer lab, laundry, and community rooms. We did request a hundred thousand dollars. Completely understand that, you know, there are other priorities here in the, in the village. We are leveraging this project with other funding sources that we're also very grateful for, particularly through IDA, the Illinois Housing Development Authority, is giving us permanent supportive, permanent supportive housing funds as well as the Illinois Affordable Housing Tax Credits. We're also receiving funding from Cook County Home Funds as well as Federal Home Loan Banks Affordable Housing Projects and DCEO money from the Illinois Capital Grants. The project is going to benefit the community by aligning with the village's consolidated plan, prioritizing affordable housing as well as the village's twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-four and twenty-two, twenty-five strategic priorities for continuing DEI efforts and seeking and maintaining the expansion of affordable housing. The project will ultimately benefit twenty-five households. That is anywhere between twenty-five to sixty people earning thirty to fifty percent AMI. So again, wanted to express our gratitude for this opportunity, and we look forward to being a member of this community.
Very good. Thanks very much. We are looking forward to doing that.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gus Anagnostopoulos. I am the Financial Director for Resources for Community Living. Offices are located forty-three hundred Lincoln Avenue in Rolling Meadows. First, I'd like to thank Nora Boyer for all of her help in getting us reestablished and able to reapply and for the entire board for welcoming, welcoming us back after being absent in the prior year. The reality is that Resources for Community Living fell into financial trouble. And during the reorganization period, we missed the filing. The reality is, we, our caseworkers were able to continue working even without the funding for your residents. And we continue to put in about two hundred and fifty to three hundred hours taking care of them, both during the twenty-four, twenty-five period and continuing on in the following year. One hundred percent of the grant money that we get from this program goes one hundred percent to taking care of our case managers only for the hours that they apply for the residents of Arlington Heights. I'm sure that's the case for everybody, but I did want to say that based on the calculations and the methodology of how the funds were applied, although we did miss last year, in prior years, because we've been serving the Arlington Heights community for quite some time, we did have a five thousand dollar donation the year before, or grant, I should say, the year before. So if you were going to apply the same methodology for us, given that we are one of the smaller programs, I really would like reconsideration and maybe get us back up to that, given the fact that we missed the funding last year by no fault of your guys for sure, but it goes a long way, dollar for dollar, for taking care of our case managers, taking care of your residents in Arlington Heights.
Okay.
That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your work that you do. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Don Frick, Vice President of Operations for Clearbrook. Just want to thank for all the support that we've received from the village over the years. Clearbrook being here for seventy years and Arlington Heights has been a great supporter of this. So I'll go quickly through the slides, but, okay. Most of you are aware of Clearbrook and you've been great supporters of us. And so, you know, what, what we really are here for is the individuals that we serve and with developmental disabilities, we have five group homes here in Arlington Heights. And the village has supported us in many ways. We've got group homes and services throughout Northern Illinois. I think the key for us is Clearbrook is one of the few organizations that provides services from birth to the end of life. And that's what this grant is mainly going to be used for. The individuals that we're serving in our Eastman home are individuals that range in the age of forty-five to seventy-two. They are gentlemen who have lived together. Some of them have, four of these individuals have lived at Clearbrook for over thirty years. And this is their life. This is their family. And what we do, we are planning to do with this money is to be able to have them age in place, for them to be able to have more accessibility in the kitchen and be able to prepare their meals and be part of that family for a long, long time. So the funds will be utilized to renovate the kitchen, make it accessible, make it wheelchair, more wheelchair accessible as they continue to age. And they're just a great group of guys. So again, thanks for all the support that you've given us, Nora. Thank you time and time again for being a great partner and understanding the needs of the community. And it's, it's sad and hard to hear that CDBG money might not be available in the future. It's been a huge part of the growth of Clearbrook over the years, from funds that we've received from Arlington Heights and other entities. So, you know, we're, we're trying to advocate as much as we can with our legislators to have funds restored and push that. But can't thank you enough for everything you guys do for us. Thank you.
All right, great. Thanks very much. Is there anyone else before we wrap it up? Mr. Moons, come on up?
Thank you, President Tenalia. First of all, I would, I would just like to say how valuable these folks are to our community. I mean, they provide services that, it's really hard to measure because if they didn't do it, we would have to come up with it somehow. And so I usually, I look back on this Exhibit A that we looked up here tonight. And under the, the expenditures part, under the public services, that it's capped at that fifty percent mark, or, I'm sorry, fifteen percent mark. The grants that are requested under that category alone versus the ones that are allocated usually fall about thirty-two thousand short. And this has kind of been going back to the last couple of years that I've noticed. It's about, you know, thirty-one to thirty-two thousand. That would make every one of those folks in that expenditures, public services completely whole. And so, you know, to put some of our skin in the game in this and to support these folks, I would ask that the village consider supporting these nonprofits and cover that shortfall amount. Where, from out of, out of the general fund or somewhere, it's thirty-two thousand. It's a very small and I think very worthwhile investment in the services that they provide. Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, I remember you saying that about a year ago right now. Very similar. Okay, well, thank you. Anybody else? I'm sure that staff will can take all of your comments into consideration. And at this point now, I think that we are done. It's time to close this hearing. Am I that right?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a trustee that would like to move, that we would close this portion of the hearing?
I'll move to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, so motion is moved by trustee Bertucci, seconded by trustee Libeds. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Done? Okay, so that portion of our hearing is closed. And now, if I'm not mistaken, we will go into citizens to be heard. And I do have one blue card, and these are citizens to be heard on items that are not on the agenda. I have Bob, or Rob, excuse me, Rob Rodecky, and he's right in front of me.
Evening, everybody.
Fabulous.
Thank you for the time as always. Just following up, actually, kind of.
Just following up, actually, kind of related to one of the topics from the survey, key point number five about the mobility, we had a lot of people walking, which is great. But I wanted to come here to ask a request to try to make that even better for moving forward. And that's for when we're doing construction projects, resurfacing sidewalks and things like that. We should make sure I request if we could try to make a rule or something that we provide a safe alternative, where if we're closing down a path, it's be used. So this is relation, as we pointed out a couple of weeks ago, I was walking to the library from Alfresco up Vale, and we are resurfacing the Metro Station walkway there. And so I was walking up on the east side, right along for the Metro path, and that resurfacing blocked off that right there. And yeah, Mr. Bertucci, it feels like you're familiar with it.
I live downtown, and I would, I walked that same path a couple of days.
Yeah, it's a, it seems like a fairly high-volume one, but I had to walk into the street to get there. And on my way back from the, the library, I noticed a family of four with two young kids, one in a stroller, that had to walk through that same thing. It's very easy to just add, you know, some cones or something like that to give them a protected path. Or in that area, it's a little bit difficult, but there's not too much crossings around the area. But just providing an extra space, making it a rule or something like that so that public works when they're shutting down a sidewalk, just like we would with drivers, we give them an alternative path. We give a safe path to pedestrians as well, especially in those high-volume areas around downtown. Thanks so many much.
All right, well, thank you for your thought and your time, Rob. Appreciate it. Good idea. Anybody else? Don't want to overlook anyone. Okay. Anything else from the board, then? If not, I think we are done for the evening, and I would entertain a, oh, no, I'm sorry, we got consent agenda. Boy, boy, don't forget that. I know there's a couple of things on here to take care of. So is there any trustee who wishes to vote no or pass on any of the consent agenda items? Seeing none? Anyone who wants an item to be removed from the consent agenda, discuss separately? None? Anyone who wants to request, anyone from the audience that would like to request the board to remove something from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none?
We do have to remove the one liquor item, because, because it, we did not have.
Which item is that?
Cow meeting.
Manager Reckless?
A.
K.
Yeah, A.
Item K.
K.
Item K will be removed? Very good. Okay, so then, is there a motion for consent agenda?
I would move approval of the consent agenda minus item K.
Second? Motion made by trustee Labads, seconded by trustee Zick. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Zick?
Yes.
Trustee Mangana?
Aye.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Santa Maria?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
President Tenalia?
Yes. And are there items of new business? None?
No, sir.
Okay, so then now we're where I thought we were a minute ago. It was hiding on the back page for all those who are interested in knowing. That's it, look for a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Motion by trustee Labads, seconded by trustee Dunnington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.